Really looking at all this stuff.
It's really looking at all this stuff.
I don't have to do it so strongly, everybody's against all the talk about COVID problems.
Yes, yeah. And these are people who are just people. Yeah. Volunteers who are being working for a free lunch and.
Literally.
Because they pay not only us, not only us, and then they do all this research. We're like, wait, this is the one.
Yeah, right. Oh.
That's like just really gnawing at me.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty percent might actually be flawless. This is actually most of that is probably due to states stumbling around. We're probably correct with that.
Yeah.
I'm quite keen on election. That's what I'm doing.
Oh, it's such a honor.
I've done a few elections on Trump's side. I think sometimes you can have a little township. And I've heard that. Boy, we're running the whole thing. You actually have a delivery. They turn that to someone. I'm sorry. It's three here, six AM, so usually around ten or eleven.
Well, I don't, I don't assume you have to do some heavy lifting this year.
Oh, yeah. It's a lot. So all of a sudden, two guys actually deliver to. I was like, I'm on the county side, but we had to wait for them all of them to come down. And then leave, re-group, we all worked out there.
You like nap until four or something like that? Like four or five to you, and then you go into work?
No, actually, my day starts at six. Damn.
It's the old guy.
Because I have to be there hour before the poll, hour before they open, because you have a tech issue. I'm there, tax department, I'm there, security. So if something happens, I have to call, I have to check somebody, I have to call a tax department.
That's right. Poll's actually at seven, I'm there at six, I'm like, I'm sorry, but I don't know this, but what is your position?
I'm the election department in the county. So I go down to create other programs.
Motherfucker.
Yeah.
It's great.
And so it gets to be crazy. I take them, I have my election, because my election was when I had to purport every last step. When I had to bring them through, first, when I had to build the program, that was my election. Once I passed my election, then I'm like, oh, I got it. Because I was stressed for her for a while.
Well, thank you.
Jesus.
That's a huge job.
It's a lot. And then I would wait myself, like, yeah, after you guys post calls, all my people that look for me at the county, they will start coming to you. And I can sit there. What's my, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine?
Oh.
I'm just gonna move the name place.
Oh, good.
You selected your seat. We'll just put Michael. No, I'm still gonna give you, but you could scrub in if you want.
Yes.
Okay, tell them where you're moving.
So Michael, Michael is Harrison.
Saki's not gonna be here.
She's out.
She's out.
Okay.
So.
And we just get started here. See, you're right. Is that show?
Yeah, we have, it's going to be live stream.
Is it live streaming now?
Oh, sure. I'll check. Okay, so, so we got Burgess, Harrison here, you, Chambers.
Okay.
Okay. And.
Yep.
Ready?
Ready?
All right, I will, uh, good evening, everybody. I will call to order our Thursday, November third, 2022, regular meeting of the City Kalamazoo Planning Commission. Uh, why don't we do the roll call?
Burgess?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Harrison is absent. Milliken?
Yep.
Phelps, absent. Patelco, absent. Pitts, absent. Swan, absent. Byas, absent.
So, and note, we do not have a quorum. Everyone's enjoying the unseasonably warm fall weather and the few days before daylight savings ends. Um, so apologize for that, but we don't really have anything on the agenda of note that requires approval or action. So we'll continue with the agenda. We'll skip a couple items of business that require formal, uh, action and decisions. And make sure we cover, uh, the issue, um, of note on the agenda, the Historic Preservation Commission's designation of City Hall. Uh, because that does not require formal action by the commission, does not require quorum. Um, it'll give us a chance to comment and give the public a chance to comment on that. So we will continue with the meeting. Uh, we just will not be able to take any formal action. So as, as a result, we won't adopt the agenda, but we have it in front of us and, uh, we've got that. Uh, we will not approve the minutes, so we'll just forward these on to our December meeting and, uh, and handle the September one minutes, uh, in December. That sound good with you, Pete?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and the next, the next meeting will be December first.
Yep. Uh, are there any other communications and announcements?
There are no other communications, um, as far as announcements. We do have, uh, two applications for the, uh, December first meeting related to rezoning. The annual review of the capital improvement program.
All right, so we're making up for lost time in December, so we'll want to make sure we have quorum in December.
Yes.
All right, we'll talk to our members, uh, then. Uh, no public hearings on the agenda, so that brings us right to PC 2022 dot ten, Kalamazoo City Hall, two forty-one West South Street. Our review of the Historic Preservation Commission's proposed designation of City Hall as a single resource local historic district. So again, this is just a discussion item, uh, but an important one. So we'll hear a presentation, um, give the planning commission members here a chance to comment or ask questions. And then we will take, uh, any comments from the public, uh, if there are any. So with that, uh, we look forward to this presentation.
And thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Luis Penya. I'm the Historic Preservation Coordinator with the City of Kalamazoo. Um, just here to present, as you said, the City Hall Local Historic District Study Report to the, uh, Planning Commission. And it was transmitted to you guys as well with this packet for your guys' review. Um, so I prepared a kind of short-ish PowerPoint here to run down some of the history and background of the City Hall. And then also explain, uh, the overall process of establishing a local historic district. And there are also some photographs, which is what I think most people come for anyways, so, um. I just wanted to start off with some of the early Native American history of the land that City Hall sits on now. Um, and this comes straight from the report. Um, uh, so in eighteen twenty-one, the Treaty of Chicago, um, took place. And that's when, uh, the Potawatomi ceded the land, and I put it in, uh, quotes, because I'm not sure that's always the most appropriate way to put it, but to the federal government. Um, and there were some reservations that were made, and the, this was one of the villages of the Machu Beneshuish. Uh, six years later, um, the reservation was taken back and, um, the native people were removed. So quite a quick transition there, if you will. Following that, in eighteen thirty, uh, Titus Bronson came with his brother-in-law, Stephen Richardson, and, uh, formally started the Village of Bronson, which would later become the City of Kalamazoo. Um, this is the original plot that's up on the screen, and, um, those four squares kind of set out the, the civic center of the city, if you will. Um, with the north two being church and court square, and then the south two becoming the park eventually. Um, I always just like to look at the old maps, too, and I think that that's a very cool one. This is all kind of very broad background to looking at the first city hall in the City of Kalamazoo, which was Corporation Hall. Um, the building is still somewhat there on Berdick Street. Um, it always kind of blows my mind that we're only on our second city hall here in the city. It's kind of impressive to think about that. Um, but, um, it housed a lot of things besides just City Hall. And there's a list up there, but you know, the Ladies Library, the, the Board of Education, the Fire Department, the Police Department, all of those things were in the building. And it acted as really the hub, and I'm sure it was an overcrowded hub until nineteen twenty-four, when I think that the citizens realized we're gonna have to get a little bit more room and probably start to divide some of those uses out, because, um, we're rubbing elbows a little bit too much, I think. Um, so in twenty-five, the building was leased to J.C. Penney, and the offices were moved out of there to the area where we were now, um, into a house. Um, and that's, I guess, the, the first time that we moved on this land, even though the building was not there yet. So in twenty-four, they purchased, uh, the Milam and Orkut properties. And between twenty-six and twenty-seven, they planned to build the new City Hall. By twenty-eight, the plan was outlined. And in nineteen twenty-eight, the city hired Jacob Crane to create the first professional plan. Being in the planning department, I think that that's kind of cool, but maybe not everyone thinks that it's kind of cool. Um, by the first of January nineteen thirty-one, citizens, uh, were told that the project would employ a hundred fifty to two hundred people. And I think that that was really something that made this project unique, was the amount of people that they were going to employ. Um, they tried to make it so people could get, uh, on every shift, and they, they tried to, I guess, just maximize the employment, especially as we are gonna be coming into tough economic times in the future. And I included a quote here, "Building the new hall kept an average of a hundred men at work during a period of nine months. A maximum number of men were given employment by using three shifts, each of which was on, uh, the job two days of every week. The city held consistently to a policy of authorizing work only on projects in which the percentage of outlay for labor was said, would be satisfactorily large." Um, I think that's very cool that we were building the civic center and making sure that the public was still, uh, engaged and employed in the process as well. City Hall is a very textbook example of art deco, uh, architecture. So it, some of the things that are exhibited is, um, symmetrical facades. This is not the best picture for that, because it's at an angle, but it is very symmetrical. Large fluid, uh, pilasters on the front, which are kind of the, the ribbed columns that run all the way up and down the building, around the entire thing. Repetition of geometric and floral patterns, which are found within the building and outside of the building, and all of the, uh, the front doors. Um, a lot of the metal pieces and gates that are at the back. It's, it's really everywhere. I've heard, and Sharon Farrar told me that some of those motifs were, were celery, which I do find amusing, um, because that was such a staple crop for us in history. It was designed by Weirian Alfred, who also built the current Fifth Third Bank Building, which is another beautiful building. Um, and the person who painted the, um, ceiling in here out of Stauffenberg, a German immigrant, also painted the, the murals inside of the Fifth Third Bank Building, which is another kind of cool connection. And just some more current pictures here, and you can see some of those floral motifs that show up all throughout. This is the part that I think is usually the most fun. These photographs are all from the study report, um, that Pam O'Connor put together. A picture of the, the building being constructed, which I think is really neat. I'm sure that it was quite the sight to see when there was nothing on the land here. Another one from the rear showing, uh, where the underground parking is, and obviously they're a little bit further along in the construction at this point. One showing what the, uh, commission chambers used to look like before the, the dais was there and when it was a courtroom arrangement, which I think is neat. Um, just a beautiful picture as well, and you can see how similar it looks now, almost exactly the same. Another angle of that that's, has a little bit more daylight with the, the dais installed there. Um, and if you guys want to look at some more pictures, I have a bunch, but I didn't know how much to include, so we can go back to that if you would like. Uh, this explains the outline of the process for establishing a local historic district, which I think is, is helpful, because sometimes just going through it with the words, I think, i- it makes it a little bit confusing. Um, so the first step is that the, the commission just kind of identifies a property. The Historic Preservation Commission identifies a property or an area that they deem to be eligible, uh, to be designated a local historic district. Uh, the second step is that a study committee, the study committee starts to, to make a report up for that. After that, photographic inventory is conducted, along with some research. The fourth step is that, uh, this, the structure or the, the district, there's two different kinds that you can have, are evaluated using the National Register of Historic Places Criteria Bulletin Number fifteen, which is just a, a set of things to, I guess, gauge a property or a district against. The fifth step is that the study committee prepares the, the preliminary study report according to, uh, section three of Public Act one sixty-nine. The sixth step is put into, um, the, the bulleted outline there, because it was an extra step that my predecessor, Sharon Farrar, would always put in to engage the public, and that was a public meeting, um, to the property owners within the area. I held that in September, on the fourteenth of September. I think that this is a novel situation, because the property owners is the City of Kalamazoo. Commissioner Pradel was present at that meeting. Um, and that brings us to step seven, which is the study committee officially transmits the report to the Planning Commission, the State Historic Preservation Office, the Michigan Historical Commission, State Historic Preservation Office Review Board, and the State Historic Preservation Office. Uh, so I transmitted it to you all for this meeting, and I also transmitted it, uh, around the same time last week, to the State Historic Preservation Office, so they can disseminate it out to the Michigan Historical Commission and to the State Historic Preservation Review Board. Um, so, I mean, I think that, uh, the process, to me, looks really front-loaded. There's a lot of stuff in the beginning, but a lot of that is legwork to get the report put together, you know? Uh, afterwards, we'll have at least sixty days after the official transmittal to have a, a public hearing. After that public hearing, there'll be, uh, one year to kind of get everything put together, uh, incorporating everything that we've gathered along the way, all the comments and recommendations. And following that one-year period, it'll go to City Commission for approval or rejection. At the end of the day, um, you know, I think a lot of people obviously ask, what does this mean? What's gonna happen to me when I'm in a local historic district? Uh, what can I, can't, what can and can't I do to the property? Is, was what I hear the most, I suppose. Um, I want to preface all of that by saying that the city has been doing an excellent job of taking care of this building, in my opinion. And I think that you guys can all see that by being in it, that it's still in really good shape, and I do appreciate all the work that they've done. Um, being in a local historic district in the City of Kalamazoo means that all exterior changes that will alter the property need to go before the, either before the Historic District Commission or, uh, put in an application to me to get that work approved. Um, and then it also means that that designation is gonna stand for, until it gets taken away. So i- it, if, if something happens to the exterior of the building, it won't take away that, that designation at all. Um, I think it's novel, because we in the City of Kalamazoo have not had a city-owned property in this capacity ever be designated as a local historic district either. And this being the center of the city, I think, would be a really great landmark to start with. And that's all that I have for presentation, and I'm happy to entertain any questions that you all have.
Awesome. Thank you for the presentation and all the information. Uh, any comments or questions?
Yeah, actually, I have a question.
Good.
First of all, I really enjoyed reading it. It was, uh, oh.
Excuse me.
No, not a problem.
Really enjoyed reading it. Um, great summary of local history, uh, especially cool, the four-square business of setting those aside. Um, I thought I read in, in somewhere toward the second half that there is already a historical district that covers quite an area, several blocks this way and that way and that way, that includes this building. Why isn't a, what it, what comes with an additional historic district just for this building?
Yeah, so.
That doesn't come with that?
You were reading about the National Register, uh, district that encompasses, if I recall correctly, that is the, the Bronson Park National, uh, Registry District. I'm not sure what all buildings are encompassed with in that one, but you're right, it does cover a couple blocks in both of the directions that you mentioned. Um, the National Register designation is largely, largely honorary, largely honorary, I think, at the end of the day. And it doesn't offer protection to buildings. Um, it does offer an additional step of review if federal funds are gonna be used to alter a property called the Section one oh six review process, but it doesn't necessarily guarantee any protections to be put on the building. Uh, National Register designation also allows people to have access to federal tax credits, which would be twenty percent back on, or twenty percent credit, rather, on qualified expenses on the property. So that's the, the National Register side of things. Local historic districts in Michigan allow for protection, uh, over a resource, so that, uh, you know, a property can't be demolished or character-altering things can't be done on the property. I guess is the, the short and narrow way to put it, but I also think that it allows for the property owners that want to make alterations to be able to come before the Historic District Commission and be able to come before people that have experience with historic buildings to open up a discourse about what projects they want to happen and see how to do that in a way that respects the character. There is also a recently enacted Michigan Historic Tax Credit, um, that just came back this year. So the last time that we had it, it was twenty-eleven. We've been on a twenty-one-year hiatus with, or eleven-year hiatus with that, uh, with that program. Um, it went relatively quick this year, because there weren't a lot of funds, but that allows people to get twenty-five percent tax credit for qualified expenses. I'm not sure that that would be applicable in this situation, because it needs to be a gener, a revenue-generating, uh, property, but that is something that is also offered to people in, in local historic districts.
Okay, I understand, and, and that this district would provide a lot more protection for the building than the other one doesn't.
Yep.
Also read that, um, while there were some modernizations of the workspaces, the, the interior public spaces really haven't been disturbed much and very much. Does the district provide any protection for the interior public, or is it just the exterior of the building?
Only the exterior. There is no, nothing that's considered for the interior of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
I just had a historical co, uh, question around Mr. Crane, who developed the first kind of design of the building. I wanted to know, was there any correlation between him and the name of one of our parks that currently exist in Kalamazoo?
So there is not. Crane was a Chicago planner that came up, and there are actually quite a few Cranes in the City of Kalamazoo. I believe that Crane Park is named after Edgar Edwin Crane, but then there was also Carolyn Bartlett Crane, who was a very influential woman in the community, um, and, uh, I'm not sure what her title would have been, but I believe with the Unitarian Church. So, um, a lot of Cranes, but not the one that's related to the, the plan there.
Good question and good answer. Um, I guess, sure, anything for, no, okay. Uh, I guess, as you said, it is, I, those historic photos are a fun part. Did enjoy looking at those. Um, it's impressive, you know, without being an expert, it's impressive, the construction techniques that, you know, they were employing in the nineteen twenties. I mean, underground parking is hard today, and they did it in nineteen twenty-four or five, or whenever that was. I mean, that's pretty awesome. And as you said, it's impressive how similar those pictures are to what we see today. And, um, you know, is some of that due to just lack of funds for renovation and investment? Or how, how much of that was, you know, love for a space and wanting to protect it? I think it's probably some of both, if we're being fair. Uh, but thank goodness, right? And what a, what a treasure that we have as a result, so, uh, so that's great. I guess you've sort of illuminated on this to a little bit, but I guess I'll just ask the simple question, and I'll give you a chance to speak to it a little bit more. Why this and why now?
Yeah, I think that this is a, a great example of, I guess, showing that we're, we're trying to protect, and we, this is something that we do cherish in the City of Kalamazoo, and we do think about protecting the resources, and we've done a great job with it already. Um, and this is, I guess, one of the, it's a really fine piece of architecture that we have here by a, a big architectural firm that we've been able to have for so long. I, I guess, speaks to the why to me quite a bit. Um, the why now is a combination of factors, I think, and the culmination of a lot of things. Um, I inherited the project from, from people before, but I know that they had had their eye on this one, uh, for quite a while with the Historic Preservation Commission, who was charged with writing the study report. Um, and it just so happened to be getting finished as I started up against, I guess, but I think, um, I guess, you know, you, you, you come up almost on a hundred years, and it might start to make you realize what you have with a building like this. Um, I think that they don't always turn out one every year. The First Baptist Church was the last historic district that they did, and perhaps from being over there, they could look over here and see, uh, that this is a great building that's situated right on the park and, um, in the civic center of the city, like I said, and at the heart of the city.
And I think, uh, that's good. And I guess, because we are to look at this in context of the master plan, it's certainly in keeping with some of the goals in the master plan. And I think, for what it's worth, um, if I can say this, it's good to sort of set an example. If, you know, I think in your position in staff year, in the Historic Preservation Commission, you go out to a lot of other entities and you suggest, hey, it'd be really good if you were to put this in a historic preservation, or a historic district, and wouldn't it be great to protect this in a historic district? Now that this is in a historic district, it kind of gives you a little bit of leverage and a little bit more strength behind that argument, so.
Yeah, certainly.
It certainly helps you in your job and kind of says that the city's put its money where its mouth is, for lack of a better word. So good. Any other comments from the commission? If not, I, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this? And is this, do we have the opportunity to check live stream comments? And I.
You can.
And I don't, I don't know if there are any, but I don't.
It is.
I don't want to be accused of not.
It'd really, it'd be best to wait till we.
Wait till public comment? You can use this one if you want. Okay.
It would be best to just wait till the general public comment.
Yeah. So if anyone is dying to, to call and speak to this, we will take comments on this item later in the public comment section, which is, uh, just moments away, so, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me and letting me present.
Good work.
Thank you.
And thank the Historic Preservation Commission as well for their efforts here. Uh, while you're up, Mr. Eldridge, City Planner Report.
And for the, uh, City Planner Report, I don't, I don't have any, um, initiatives to talk about tonight. Um, I already made the announcement about what is coming up on the December first, uh, Planning Commission meeting agenda. And then, um, you know, the last item under reports is the Site Plan Review, uh, Projects List, uh, which, which normally there's, um, not any questions about that, but if there is, you know, we can, we can talk about those after the meeting. So that is really, you know, it as far as additional information to share for tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, with that, uh, we are now to the point of public comments. Um, any comments on non-agenda items? This is the opportunity. Uh, so are there any members of the public that would like to speak? So seeing no one in the audience, we will pause for a moment to allow Pete to check and see if there's anyone online. And I guess I, I never gave the call-in number, but I think it's on the screen if you're watching, but it is eight 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 three eight two nine five five six.
We, we have no callers at this time.
No callers at this time, okay. So we'll close the public comment section, and Mr. Pradel, City Commissioner comments.
Evening, everyone. Good to see you all. Uh, just wanted to remind everyone, a very important day next Tuesday, it's Election Day. Hopefully, um, City of Kalamazoo residents receive this mailer at their household, um, from the clerk's office, which. Hopefully, City of Kamazoo residents receive this mailer at their household from the clerk's office, which gives advice and recommendations and information about how to vote before or on Election Day. Just wanted to remind people that one of the things that the City of Kamazoo did back in 2020 is we have two satellite, or we have two locations for early voting opportunities, and one's at Western Michigan University's Bernhardt Center. And so, and the postcard, I just wanted to share with the public just some opportunities for early voting opportunities. So this Saturday, November 5th, both here at City Hall and at the Bernhardt Center at Western Michigan University, you can go there from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then on Monday, November 7th, both locations, again, here and at the Bernhardt Center, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then on Tuesday, Election Day, you know, in addition to your polling location, there's still those two sites as well. It's important, I wanted to mention about that Bernhardt Center location because, you know, it doesn't just have to be for WMU students, it's open to any voter, you know, and just like any voter could come here to City Hall, any voter could go to the Bernhardt Center as well. Then also just want to remind you, if you have any questions as well, you can call 311. You can also just check out michigan.gov/vote, and, you know, of course, one of my favorite resources is vote411.org for voter information, so you can just type in your address, and then it will actually pull up your customized ballot and show you a side-by-side comparison of all the candidates and voter issues and everything on your ballot. So it's incredibly important, no matter how you decide to vote, that you vote and exercise your right to do so. There's a lot at stake in the country, especially this year, and so I really want to encourage people to exercise that right and get out there and vote. I remind people that it's one of the few days in the world where someone who is a billionaire has as much power as somebody who might be houseless, you know? We each have one vote and one equal power that we could exercise ourselves, and so I hope you get a chance to do that. So, thank you.
All right. City Commissioner, Planning Commissioner comments? Anyone?
Besides the message that the commissioner just gave us, but, you know, if you want to identify or, you know, research candidates, that the Public Media Network has different presentations that they've done on candidates to give you a better idea about who's running for what and, you know, how they're showing up for the votes. There's other opportunities out here, too, that you can kind of research to see what and how you should show up to the polls. I want to put that out there, too. Next Tuesday is an important date, so.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Prado referred to, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Prado referred to early voting opportunities, and I'll defer to Ms. Chambers, but is it correct that any registered voter in, can go down to the, in the city can go to the clerk's office and request an absentee ballot during office hours and vote that way right there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
All right. And I'll just go with what we've been going with as well. If you do have an absentee ballot, and if you're listening to us or we play this meeting, make sure that if you have it in your possession now, that you go ahead and turn it into the local clerk's office. Don't take it to the post office if you want to guarantee that your vote is counted. Right now, as of today, City of Kamazoo has over 10,000 ballots out. If you're one of those 10,000 that have still not turned your ballot in, make sure that you turn it in. We have about 5,000 ballots that have already been turned in, so make sure that if you still have your absentee ballot, that you drop it off to your local clerk as soon as possible. And like Commissioner Prado said, this weekend, the local clerks will be open, so that way you can vote throughout the county.
And that dropping it off can include the drop boxes that are scattered throughout the, I think there's four of them here in the city. Yeah. I want to take advantage of this opportunity to appropriate, or to comment somewhat appropriately rather than on social media, et cetera, about the temporary street furniture in my neighborhood of Winchell, and just thank the city for notifying us in the neighborhood for the tests that they're doing and for completing the test. It is so rare, and for those of you that don't know, there's two temporary roundabouts in sort of funky intersections, three-way intersections, that are dangerous. I drive through one of them at least twice a day. And then several bumpouts near the elementary school to make with the idea, the design of making the pedestrian crossing a little safer and slowing down traffic. Do they work? Do they not work? Up to, up for debate, and that is valid debate. And that's why you run a test, right? Rather than invest significant monies, put in infrastructure that's hard to remove, but you run this test, you put in something that's cheap, it may not look great, but it's because it's temporary, and you evaluate it, right? And then you decide, oh, yeah, this was a bad idea, we got to try something else. Or, oh, look at this, it worked great. And then you design it for something that's more permanent, more aesthetically pleasing, et cetera. But just the, I just want to thank the city for doing that. Testing and piloting is not something that is typical, not to bash engineers, but particularly from a public works engineering side. It's usually, the book says, do this, then that's what we're going to do. But to go to this extreme, go to this measure is really quite exceptional. So thank you for doing it. The roundabouts are exceptional, and they really work well, and I'm excited by it, and I know many who are. But, so, that's my appropriately placed comment on the issue. With that, seeing no other comments or anything, this meeting is adjourned, and we will see you all clump and happy after turkey in December. Thank you all. Bye-bye.